Ten minutes please. Nice shore.
Nice and shore.
It was shore.
All looks good. I make the motion too.
Second, all in favor? OSU extension contract.
I just text Kathy to ask her to call and let's come back to that.
Okay, I thought he said he'd be here.
Well, he called this morning and asked when the Excise Board meeting was. So we told him the Excise meeting by the way is tomorrow. But I didn't think anything about going, okay, you're coming to the 10 o'clock meeting. So I don't know.
All right, we will. We're going to Sourcewell approved as nationwide purchasing program. For getting three for a mower.
This is for, they're going to go to Brother Brothers to get a mower. Brother Brothers says that we've already been approved as a Sourcewell. I looked back through the minutes. I don't remember us ever actually going through the minutes. Cause I know the Fairgrounds was going to get that tractor.
Tractor.
Oh, there it is. Off of Sourcewell. But we never really put it through the meeting because they went out for bid on it. So I said, just to make sure, let's put it on there. I hate to put it on, but we could.
Hey, I'll tell you something. Is that more than they sell, is it there?
They sell it, I know. I thought they did.
That's something you need to keep in mind.
Well, I move to accept the nationwide purchasing program.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Now, we got only here, we'll go with the OSU contract.
Well, you guys got your budgets all done and for everybody's estimate of the needs, right? Everything's correct. Well, that's done. We never can get a contract signed. So it's time for our contract. So there's three copies there. One for you guys, one for us, and one for Stillwater. So I just basically talked about what we're doing. That's the same figures of us. Or estimate of the needs.
Yeah.
So we appreciate you guys supporting us. You're not just supporting us, but you're supporting the kids in the county.
You guys provide a great service.
We appreciate that.
We need to get signed one of these copies or do we?
No, yes, sign all of them.
I move to accept the contract.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
We do appreciate the support. By supporting, supporting the Extension Office, you're not just supporting the kids, but you're supporting everything in the county that will provide education.
It has, it's always been.
And if there's anything I can help you guys with, you let me know.
Can you help with sanity?
Insanity?
Sanity, yeah. He didn't say that.
Let me make one copy just so I have it until the other one comes back.
Well, why don't you start on that? You have to go to swing a big loop on that one, wouldn't we, Jay?
You know who brought it up though, you know.
Uh, it's not gonna be much longer, Stan.
Just days.
When does the, when does the new commissioners swear in now?
What, the 4th of January or?
First Monday of January.
Think it's the 4th. I'm not.
There you go.
Yeah. Clicking right on by.
Once again, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, we next item on the agenda is the transfer from County Insurance, County General Insurance to County General Payroll to cover our safety incentive. As per the auditor said, that's what we needed to do.
Should I feel signed there and then down there? Both good.
All both of us.
All both of you, yeah.
Transferring from County General Insurance.
To County General Payroll.
To County General Payroll.
Jay's on that side of the top, right?
Yep, yep.
I move to accept the transfer.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Appropriations.
There we go.
This is Highway and this is Fairgrounds. This is where their sales tax portion and then any interest. They've, their accounts split up into several accounts to gain some interest. That one is anytime she does a mortgage, she gets so much a mortgage. And so that goes into her cash account and the church or she has a company. This is 911. You know, there's a 50 cent charge. Is it still 50 cents, Jay?
Do what?
The, the tariff, phone tariff. Is it still 50 cents per cell phone and a dollar per landline or did it go up to 75 and a dollar?
I think they upped it. I can't remember what.
75 cents for everybody in a household that has a cell phone. They pay a 75 cent tariff. And then again, a landline is a dollar per landline. And that goes into our 911, our enhanced 911 to kind of give them a little bit of money going in.
Yeah, now, to like last year, there were 126,000, something like that.
Um, they, this is a new account that they created. It is collected somehow upstairs and then she can, she doesn't have an M and O like everybody else. This is a new account then that she can actually find things that she needs up in the book books office. It's a new account that they established. This one is my preservation. So much of my documents that are filed go into my office, goes back into my preservation. And this is of interest on that account for me. Um, this is anything that is ran through then. We have a preservation fee and then we have a regular fee that goes into County Clerk for anything that's filed at my office. Cash and financials. This is the sales tax portion of County General that goes into. This is Assistant Revolvere. Anytime she sells any maps or she sells anything, that goes into her account. Um, visual inspection. This one is interest on her visual inspection account. She has two cash accounts. This one is actual sales tax portion of 911 that comes in. That is.
We just, oh, you get it.
Anything that sells tax has to be in its own separate account so that they can track it to make sure that's spent on anything that the ballot says. This is their interest on Jet Fire Department. They have a couple CDs. This one is the health portion of the sales tax. This is the actual sales tax and then it's a breakdown between the ambulants and the nine fire departments. The rest of it is interest for ambulance. The commissioners have to sign these and then the next day the Excise Board stands on them. This is the sales tax portion of, um, the, right here is the sales tax portion of the, no, this is a license. And this is the portion that comes into Highway for, from the licensing. And it still comes from the Book of the Tax Commission. And the rest of that is interest that goes straight into Highway. And then they break it down into their personal services, their retirement, their health insurance. If there's any left, some goes into M and O. And then these accounts here are those, oops, I can't go straight across. This is comes in and it's split three ways. That's that new CRV, I money that comes in. And so I'm changing your bait on these. This one here, they, this is Stan's lucky day, you know.
That's your money. I did that, I did that as a, I did that as a favor.
As a favor. This is the wind turbine, that I and V energy. They're gonna use that four miles there west of Owling or their little project. And this is part of their money that's coming in. Um, you guys took some stuff to unit iron, so that goes in. And then, was that they had a refund from the Tax Commission by $11? And they took some, District One took some stuff to get it higher.
Nobody gave me a bonus.
I know, they didn't. Well, I think they probably thought you didn't share your bonus with them.
I move to get appropriations.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
This is more money that's coming in from the Tax Commission. We don't split this into the three districts. They keep all of that together into one district and then whoever kind of needs it, they kind of take turns. This is the, this is our sales tax portion of this split over three districts then. This last one is anytime he gets any fees or anything from upstairs, he gets a portion of those fees. And that goes into this cash account. Same one here. Anytime they have any fees up there, I do not try to pretend to even understand how their fees work upstairs.
Monthly officer report and court clerk records, management preservation after your court.
We have that one this time. We have just the court clerk's regular one. We have the sheriff. We have the election board and mine and Jennifer's. Each officer has to turn in a monthly officer report stating what monies have come into their accounts. And then that court clerk record preservation, that our management, that's that new account. I've never just listed it just as a monthly one since it's actually coded as something differently.
Did you guys make it back to anywhere after, after you got off the flight and it started raining?
No, we must, I took, Lyle was in, my grandson was in the pickup with Brian. So they, my daughters went up and watched the lighting of the tree. But we took a while on back to the house and so he didn't.
When Katie and I were leaving and it was raining, I said, well, I hope those two ladies had a way back.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, Tammy's daughters were there at Travis's store. They were standing outside of it. So yep, she did also. That's a nice, I went ahead and, oh, Cheryl Jansen had it on Facebook. So I went ahead and watched it and there was a lot of floats. Ours was so special.
Was our lights on?
Ours blinked. I mean, it caught people's attention.
Yeah, ours was like the blinking float. I was so busy watching ahead of me, I didn't see it start blinking. And they called me on the phone saying, our float is dying.
I went to call you and my phone died. Oh my God, oh goodness, I can't even call him and tell him that. And so Tammy called real quick and Katie answered, so it worked out fine.
We pulled that float with that one in big trucks and from the rain, it breaks. He just barely touched.
He kept our attention that way, we did not fall asleep.
Barely just touched that brake pedal and that thing just jerked.
It was mainly the driver, you didn't get a little bit.
The driver was a jerk.
It worked out good.
I've been being all over the road.
I wonder how many kids were confused with, that have been so many Santa Clauses in the rain. But thank goodness I didn't have to answer those questions yet.
Well, they explain if they catch Mama kissing Santa Claus.
That's true.
They just won't know which ones it is.
I move to accept your report.
I'll second that one.
All in favor? Monthly Highway Expenditures.
I stopped you. The commissioners have to put out an expenditure sheet that says what they anticipate possibly is. They're getting the amount. It used to be a habit page and now it's a whole page because all of the, you know, changes.
Don't add anymore. I move to accept the highway expenditure.
She loves this. Each one now has a, has a personal services they have and health insurance they have a retirement. Instead of just being on one account before July of 19, they passed it where every county will have the same accounting system. Supposed to cut down on our expense of all of this, but we haven't seen that yet. Not a bit of Jake's favorite.
That word's so stupid.
This is the alcohol beverage tax that's split in between all of our rural towns. This comes in each month to rural towns.
You want me to make a motion for these?
That's fine, hey.
So when we're trying to pass that liquor.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Our little towns, it's not much, but at least it's something.
Eighteen and seventeen more.
Got all signed, got all of the, um, affidables signed.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Uh, second, all in favor?
I have them some here, where? Some articles to you guys.
Where'd you get my name on the list? Jay's the fastest one and I can't keep up.
There's Jay's and Nancy's and Riley's.
Give no warrants or bail.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I know, I got them getting down.
Your parents gonna get out of that?
No, it's like that stacking, I'm going, ooh.
He was so important to her, Eddie.
Getting back to my moonshine. I got some moonshine that's so good, you just wanna drink it like water. And you can't drink about that much. And I feel like tickle. Maybe that isn't legal, I don't know.
Farmer needs to sign that. I'll hold it and I pulled his, the Fairgrounds blankets also.
You got one this one?
It's a blanket. Anytime you have a blanket, you have to sign that. We'll sign up here. When we put the blankets through, then you have to sign the blanket ones.
I just copied this.
A different one about that.
Put it over there. How often does copy get? I can't, I don't copy.
Once a quarter probably. When they just come by and maintain them, that once a quarter. Unless it's like often they come into ours. Usually right after they leave, it's when we have problems and then they have to come back. And it's all in that maintenance thing. And then usually they're out here, we call in and have them to service it. We're just after that afternoon or the next day.
How often does copy get? I can't, I don't copy.
Once a quarter probably. When they just come by and maintain them, that once a quarter. Unless it's like often they come into ours. Usually right after they leave, it's when we have problems and then they have to come back. And it's all in that maintenance thing. And then usually they're out here, we call in and have them to service it. We're just after that afternoon or the next day.
They wonder why there aren't any trees left around the courthouse. Let them cut them all down to make tape. That's our plan, knowing the way to eat your dinner, look.
This is an RM on call. It means my name is a doctor on call. My RM will be here so many days a week. So they kind of screen the inmates as they come in. And then. It's just to help. You don't have to sit in the hospital, it's on you. Or that's on us.
About time you fill her back up. We did, what class are you in?
I need to take that check with me, too. Dinner baking?
Dinner baking.
They wonder why there aren't any trees left in the courthouse. Let them cut them all down and make tape.
This is an RN on call in twenty minutes. A doctor on call. Our RN will be here so many days a week. So they kind of screen the inmates as they come in and. So it's supposed to help, you know, this is the hospital, it's on. I don't know. Usually Rick will come up and, I don't know if they're still working, I don't know, come in, do you know his?
I haven't heard. About time to fill her back up. We do that one twice a year.
I need to take that check with you too, dinner baking.
Dinner baking?
Second, all in favor? Blanket purchase order.
Fairgrounds, but I'll hold those until next week when Marvin's here. We have the sheriff, we have county clerk, we have the treasurer. Don't sign those. There's District Two's. We have District One, vulture fire, emergency manager, jet, Nescotanka.
I just got Jake to.
No, those are yours.
Okay.
Those are yours, and there'll be more than one there. Take your paper.
I'll sign me?
Yep. No, they've already been signed and they sent them in, but we have to put them to the meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion on the blankets.
All in favor? I'll second you. Road crossing permit? None. Decoration and surplus for District Three for John Deere, six seventy-two D grade.
Now, let me take that. We got a buyback on that, right?
I don't know how you're seeing with that.
Yes, you are correct, I'm sorry. Yes, she has the note on here, uh, two forties, that's the original, one ninety-five, hundred ninety-five thousand.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was in line.
One ninety-five, yeah, that's correct.
This was your declaration, need a motion on that, the Metlusia resolution.
I move to accept the declaration.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Resolution for disposal.
That was what I sent you through, the shirt with a hundred ninety-five on it.
I'll make motion on that.
I'll second it, all in favor?
No, you can't, oh, we can't pass these, we can't pass these, he can't do that.
You can't do that because we'll have to take care of that next one.
That's right.
So, no action?
Yeah, no action on it.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get it.
I'll come to the second one next week.
Transfer documents from county clerk to treasurer's for.
If you are not succeeding yourself.
Sit and stand.
After that election, you can't do any resolutions to the so far declarations, to so far, you can't book anybody, you can't sign any of them. I'm sorry, transfer? This is one of those sit and stand risers. The treasurer's office took mine.
Get it on the bottom, maybe?
Yep, anywhere on the bottom.
Okay, I'll make motion on that. Second, all in favor? County COVID policy.
Um, you have the correction on the charge of account thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This was two more accounts.
Yes, yes.
That we either had the fund number or the department number that they told us to put on there, they want us to change now. There's been no POs put on either one of these accounts, so these two are easy. They're just, one of them is, there's like nine hundred dollars in that juvenile one. And gosh, this was like three years ago or so.
Been a while back.
They had said from the, from the sheriff cash, that those needed to be coded as juvenile. Haven't touched them since then, so. And then the other one is visual inspection. They had had us put it as sixteen hundred, which is her regular accessory account, and it needs to be visual inspected. I asked them that when we made those charge of accounts and they said, no, it needs to be a sixteen hundred. Now it needs to be a seventeen hundred, so. Those are just those two accounts, like I said, and. I'll make those changes.
It's like that bill that just came through.
Yep, yep.
To them. These new accounts are supposed to cut audit in half. Did you notice it's almost sixteen thousand dollars there to have them audit? And they're supposed to be there half time, they're used, they ought to cut that in half. But it, it's not gonna happen.
They keep telling me that they're almost done, they're almost done, but then they call when they speak with, and then a whole new set of things does send them.
Really?
Yeah, there's not a, not a week that's went by.
Uh, the new.
No, second that.
Oh, yeah, second, all in favor?
I wrote it down, but I.
There's some new regulation changes for our COVID policy and it comes from the CDC's updated guidelines for quarantine after direct exposure to COVID-nineteen. Effective immediately, Alphale County will be implementing these guidelines, meaning any employee currently in quarantine will fall under these guidelines. In other words, Marvin's under quarantine, the new guidelines will supersede the old ones. The fourteen day quarantine is back to ten without a test and it's back to seven if you take a test within five to six days and it tests negative. That's what it basically says down here, or just what I said. And then the third part, well, anyone who has been exposed must monitor symptoms for fourteen days from exposure. Or if symptoms appear, will need to return to quarantine. So that fourteen days is still intact.
Did you hear that lady from Tulsa on the news this morning? It was on Channel twenty-five. She has went in and tested three times, came back negative all three times. And she had, in between her second and third test, she had lost her sense of smell and sense of taste. So she went to her regular doctor and they tested her again, still come back negative. She went back again seven days later and says, what do I do? I still don't have any of that. And they said, well, you're gonna be positive, but you're gonna show up negative on the test, something with her system, I'm like going.
That happened to one of my coworkers. She has a weird genetic thing already and she was positive, but it all came back negative.
Negative?
Yeah, it's something with her blood. It's over genetic, it's strange.
Well, anyway, I move to accept these amendment changes in our policy.
I'll second it.
I'll email these.
All in favor?
To the districts, I'll email them to the districts, so that way they can come back. I'm sorry, I made that motion, I was jacking.
You tell her she's standing.
Like, he made the motion, I second it.
Oh, thank you.
He's confused.
I was confused, I was jacking. I believed him.
I already hit her up, man.
It's on you.
Just wanna make sure I was right.
No, thank you.
Somebody called this morning, that's gonna affect.
Any answer seen, baby.
Geez, that would do us nothing now.
I'll second that.
All in favor?